Have the minutes, Dr. Circulater. It is now six P M. We're gonna go to our first on agenda. We're gonna have three point one, Murray Lashinsky. He's our cop coordinator. You have a presentation, I believe. Is it just you speaking, or you have someone else?
Just me.
Just you?
But I'd like to introduce Aaron O'Shaughnessy, who's our secretary.
Okay.
And Lynn Deco, who's our co-coordinator and who's going to be assisting in helping run the program.
Okay, so you can just have a chair, state your name, address.
Can we just hold on? Just wondering if Counselor Cliver's in?
I've tested.
Okay. I just saw the name on the screen.
She has confirmed she can hear counsel.
Okay.
Let me just go ahead.
Murray Lashinsky, ten seventy-five, Tasha Road, West St. Paul.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much for allowing us to do this presentation. Just, we don't have this on the slide, but this, the red dots, if you just wanna pass it, gives you an idea of where our thirty two volunteers are located. We missed faulty or coverage. So just the last minute thing we got to share with the groups, so we're pretty well covered for the entire R M. Anyways, for this year's presentation, what we wanted to do was just share a little bit of data about where we've come. Covid did a real number on the program, the entire province. So in December of twenty twenty-one, I became the coordinator and began the rebuilding process. And since then, if you look at your screen, you can see that we've increased our patrol hours in twenty twenty-two by thirty-four percent. And kilometers, it's a large area we gotta cover, so we've increased the kilometers by forty-eight percent. And we definitely are on the right track for improving on our patrol hours. And we'll be able to make sure our community is, you know, avoid as much unwanted visitors as possible. At least let them know we're out there, so. Next slide, some of the key accomplishments. We have volunteered at different community events, attended the business expo, did a presentation at the seniors luncheon. We, on Halloween night, we did a real good blanketing of the area. We had five patrols out, landing flashers, just making sure the folks that were out there, that they could be seen. And there weren't many danger of being hit, so we gave out reflective wristbands and Halloween flashers. Midnight evening patrols were increased as a result of our discussions with the R C M P. We asked, you know, when is the most activity taking place? And they basically said that the majority of the activity is in the evenings and midnight. So we decided to see if we could sort of increase the patrols during that period, which basically going back to the previous checks. So you can see, we've got to go from four shifts. And you can see that the shift one basically doubled in the amount of hours. And that's one of our goals, then continue increasing that. And the other shifts, shift two, shift three, and shift four, to take a look at trying to sort of focus on the times when most of the activities are taking place in our R M. Next slide. One of the sheets were handed out, every month, by the middle of the month, I have to submit hours to the province. The province's funding is based on the amount of hours that are submitted. And it's through the government department, Department of Justice, that provides the funding to the provincial board. Provincial board is the ones that supplies the vests, the magnetic signs, the training manuals, what have you, tied in with the caps. So that's what the provincial board, and their funding comes from the Department of Justice. So this is basically what I send every month, by the middle of the month, I have to send that into the province. And the province takes that data and in turn shares that with the department, the government department that does the funding. So I just want to throw that in. And the, the graphs, the next two graphs, just takes these numbers and just gives you an illustration as to how our hours, kilometers, volunteer hours have been sort of put to use. The volunteer hours are strictly just, their volunteers are investing significant onto their time to help West St. Paul be a safer community for all residents. The volunteers do not get paid for their time. They are compensated for the miles, for the gas they burn. But the actual time that they spend, and that's in addition to attending the different community events, the training that we do, the meetings, that's all volunteer. And we've got a great group right now that has come through very strong in, you know, providing us with the time we need to sort of do the training and do the involuntary, attending the Canada Day celebrations, the senior luncheons. So, so just wanted to make sure that everybody understands that patrol hours is all volunteer. The time that people spend in the cars, that's all volunteer. So skipping to the, to the goals, or goals for twenty twenty-four, is we currently have thirty-two volunteers. We actually have two more that have contacted us in the last week or so that are gonna be coming on board. Some of them are on vacation right now, so in March, I anticipate to be signing up two or three more volunteers. And with the strong support that I've been getting from the group in increasing our patrol hours, one of the reasons we were looking at getting more volunteers is to get more patrol hours out there. But the group has really been coming on, the existing group has really been coming on very strong in going out and doing instead of one patrol a month, two patrols, three patrols, and also mixing it up from going during the day to the evening to the midnight patrols. So that is a real positive step. But the more volunteers we get, the more exposure where people can see us out there, the better chance we have in, I guess, detering the unwanted individuals in our areas, so. We're looking at, our goal is to increase, we did eight hundred and fifty-seven hours. We're looking to do a thousand hours in twenty twenty-four. I'm hoping that we can even do better than that, because as I said, the last couple of months, November, December, exceeded my expectations by quite a bit, so. We're looking at participating in more West St. Paul community events. We're considering possibly a fundraising barbecue on Canada Day, that's been one of our discussions. What we feel is really important is we have to improve our communications to local residents. And the West St. Paul newsletters help that, the email blasts help that. We put posters on just whatever bulletin board that we have, recruitment posters. But we still find there's a lot of residents that don't know that citizens of, will exist in West St. Paul. So that's one of the things we definitely wanna try and get out there and become more, more visible. The other thing that we're finding is the R C M P has sort of been hit and miss in providing us information as to what areas, times. So we've sort of developed, or started to develop a network where people just call us and let us know and say, hey, you know, we had a break-in, because a lot of times people don't report these incidences. So we're looking at creating a cop info-sharing system so more of our patrols can respond and be focused in those areas where vandalism is more prevalent. So if there's issues that are happening on Jackman Road, for example, we'd like to know about it. So then what I do is I then in turn inform the thirty-two, the thirty-one volunteers, you know, you're doing a patrol, take a patrol down Jackman Road. Right now, we're focusing quite a bit on Rossmore and Addis because there's been quite a bit of activity taking place in there. But that came from just local residents telling us that, folks, an automobile's being taken. So that is why we think this cop info-sharing system's gonna be important. We're not sure, we're just, it's just in the infancy stages right now. We're really wanting to try and get that information to us so we can share. And then in turn, we've been letting the R C M P know on stuff that no one's been informing. And we always tell the residents, call the R C M P. Doesn't matter how serious it is, and the reason being is they tag it, they mark it. So if there's a lot of incidents happening in Rossmore or Tasha or Moore, they're gonna make an effort to send an extra patrol out there and drive by. And it is, you know, you have to be at the right place at the right time or the wrong time if you're gonna catch anybody. But definitely, we know that the more exposure we're out there, the better chance we have in slowing down some of this activity, because it's happening all over the province, all around us. We're seeing increased activity. And as the warmer weather comes, you know, you're gonna see a lot more of that, so. Next slide, most important one. So originally, I was asked to get something in, and I already remember, which I did. And we had, at that time, forecasted some numbers that we thought we'd hit by the end of twenty twenty-four. Well, in actual fact, we hit those numbers at the end of twenty twenty-three. So our original request of seven thousand dollars was just not gonna be enough to sort of make it throughout the whole year. So our new adjusted projected targets for twenty twenty-four are, we're gonna be probably doing about fourteen thousand kilometers and over a thousand patrol hours. And one of the things we're gonna focus on too is it seems that we've got such a large area to cover, but we're gonna try and focus in areas where there's the activity from the reports that are happening. So if we gotta go to Rushman Road, or North Thunderland, or whatever, those are the areas we're gonna try and focus on. As you know, with the large area that we gotta cover, there's quite a bit of kilometers that have to be done to cover it, so. So right now, we're asking the R M to consider sponsoring a budget, cop twenty twenty-four budget for eight thousand dollars. Seven thousand will go approximately to the kilometers, and a thousand will go to support training activities and miscellaneous events, like the meetings that we hold, some of the other items that we do. It does not include wristbands. We did purchase wristbands last year, but we're thinking of, with the wristbands, the reflective wristbands that we're going to come back. We've probably got enough to cover us for the next few months, but we're going to probably come back and with a proposal to council that maybe the R M buys the reflective wristbands, and they basically can hand them out to whoever they want, say, Canada Day, and the citizens of patrol volunteers will get some of those wristbands. So when we're out patrolling and we do see someone walking late at night that has no reflective clothing, we can hand out reflective wristband to them at the same time. But just wanted to sort of put that in there, so. That basically completes my presentation. Any questions?
Go ahead. So, you know, getting the word out about C O P P obviously is important. I'm just wondering if like a WhatsApp group or something, so that people could say, hey, you know, my house at this address got broken into, and then it would be a more immediate, you know, information to you guys?
That's what we're sort of thinking, looking at.
That's a free thing, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, the Facebook group is, is good also, but WhatsApp, everybody's on their phone, you know, X number hours a day, like Legends, where I, we have a Facebook, I'm sorry, a WhatsApp group, so that, you know, for suspicious vehicles, like, and it's constantly, you know, sometimes two, three in the morning, someone will take a picture or take it off their camera and put it on there. So that's, I think it'd be a good, good tool for you guys, and then you could, then we could advertise it. It's good and bad, right? Because then if there is any, let's say, people that aren't, you know, as good as you people, they, they now know where you're gonna, if you say, hey, we're patrolling this area or that area, well, they're gonna stay out of those areas that night or whatever, right?
Yeah, well, we never ever tell what areas we're patrolling that night. We just tell each other that we're patrolling.
Yeah.
And, but that's a good idea, that's something along those lines, that's what we're looking for. So for example, you know, if you've got a group there that's got some stuff happening, then maybe you send that, somehow we get it to Info App, West St. Paul.
I, I, I think it'd be good if you guys had your own, like, your C O P P WhatsApp group, because you can have unlimited number of people, and you'd be an administrator, or, you know, one of you.
Okay.
And you're, when people say, hey, add me to the group, so that they can message, you're the one that's in control of that. They have to give you their name and number and address, so that you know who they are when you're adding them to the group.
Okay, that's, that's a very good idea. That's something that we definitely, that's high on our priority, to try and get some sort of networking type deal where we know what's going on, so.
Yeah, we can, you can, you have my number, you, I can help you with that set up if you want.
Appreciate, yeah, we'd like to tie in with what you got happening in Legends, because it'd be nice if, you know, Meadowlands and Trails of West St. Paul, tie them all in and.
Who knows if they already have their own or not too, right, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, no, that's, that's good, thank you very much.
And then just one other thing. The wristbands, obviously reflective wristbands are a good thing. How many people, when you, you handed out, I don't know how many you had to start, or how many you penned it out?
Probably about fifty we handed out.
Oh, okay, okay, I wasn't sure if you're handing out, you know, like a Canada Day a hundred or two hundred.
No, no, Canada, we, we don't, no, this was strictly for patrols, no, no.
Have, have you seen people later on wearing them, actually? Yeah, okay.
We handed out quite a few on Halloween night this year.
Excuse me.
There was some.
If you wanna speak, I should have come to you.
Yeah, Halloween night, that was a night where we did hand out quite a few. We had some leftover flashers that was from the previous, and reflective wristbands that we did hand out, and they did put them on. And we've seen people where they've had, the flashers have limited, so that's why we decided to go with the reflective wristbands and, but yeah, we, we ordered two hundred. We ordered the bigger ones for Parkus, but we're hoping that with the council, we'll order the smaller ones that just fit around the wrist when you're walking during the summer type deal, so that they can be seen. But we do reinforce, hey, this is just a temporary thing.
Yeah.
Get a reflective hat or vest or something. And the ones that do walk along wearing reflective clothing, we stop and praise them and say, good job, Ted Dill, and let them know that they're doing good and fast delivery.
Last night, when I came home, was the first time I'd seen anybody in Legends ever, there was a couple, and they both had on vests, reflective vests, so I thought, oh, it's really good.
That's a good idea.
Okay, thank you.
Another, sorry, Counselor.
Yeah, Murray, talking about the reflective clothing, when I did the patrol with you, I think people are more concerned with their animals being more reflective, because we saw the dogs right away, and the person, you couldn't tell if they were standing on the ditch side of the roadside.
Yeah.
So it's, it's important to make sure that everybody's, you know, seen, not just, not just the dog.
Correct, well, we've had a few close calls where people almost gotten hit. And I've been here since nineteen ninety, and I know that there's been a few people that have been hit because they weren't seen at night, so.
Going at your, your goals, I'm gonna start there. So you have thirty-two members now, and you're, you wanna get it to forty, is that what you're looking?
We're, we're hoping to increase to forty. We had, we're actually gonna be dropping by one, Malakai Berg. He joined our group about a year ago. And he just graduated this past Monday as an R C M P officer. He used the cop program as a stepping stone to get him, get him into, into that group. And I'm proud to say that he graduated, and I believe he's being transferred to Nova Scotia next week for his one-year stint, so.
Okay, I'm gonna get back to your, which part is it? Uh, I guess it's in the budget. At your A G M, which I attended, and the mayor was with me there, that you were saying that there's, the cop program used to give you out hats, shirts, all that kind, they still supply the vests?
They supply the vests and the hats, there's, they cut back, they don't do any T-shirts or tukes or anything more like that. But yeah, they still do the magnetic signs, the vests, the hats, some brochures, business cards, generic business cards, and that's under training manual.
Okay.
That's basically it's.
I'm just trying to calculate something on your, on your budget request here, just to see if there's something that.
We're hoping to piggyback on, we were doing a lot of our own photocopying and stuff on our, off our printers. And for this last A G M, we did all our printing at the access center. The Maryland was out there, so those packages that everybody got at the, at the thing, that normally would have just come off of my inkjet printer, and you can only print so much off that, so. So we're hoping that, you know, the paper and some of the other, it might be two, three hundred dollars, but still, that'll help reduce costs by, by utilizing. And then in the event that there's something that we wanna look at purchasing, perhaps we can talk to the R M and see, you know what, we might look at wanting to buy, like, for example, laminated sheets to laminate some of the maps that we have. So stuff like that, or folders, that we did, the presentation folders that we handed out at the meeting. You know, stuff like that, if we don't have to buy that.
Okay, you answered a lot of the stuff I was gonna ask right there.
We're well aware that what we're asking for is probably not gonna cover our entire year's expenditures.
Can you just mention your name?
Well, I'm Lynn Deco.
And your address?
Twenty-two ten Rushman Road.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we're ahead.
And we're well aware that what we're asking for is probably not gonna be our full budget for the year, and that's why we're considering fundraising activities, like a barbecue on Canada Day as an example, or, and we're looking at things like that, so.
That's a pretty well answered.
Thank you, do you have any questions, any?
Oh, good.
Yeah, does Counselor Cliver have any questions?
No.
No? So I got a couple, so you mentioned that, you know, that you wanted to get some visibility. So in some areas, there are signage that says area patrolled by cops. I don't know, are you still able to get some more of those signs?
I have, as a matter of fact. Uh, Dr. One, the request I was gonna ask I got about eight signs, metal signs. So if there's areas in the R M that we feel that aren't, I guess, identified, I put up nineteen signs last year throughout the R M, mainly in the new developments, that, you know, Meadowland stuff. But there might be areas that still, that we could look at putting signage. But I do have eight new signs that, that we are available to be mounted. And I can get signs at any time if we need more.
Okay. And it used to be, uh, Manito Public Insurance used to be able to sponsor.
Sponsor, yeah.
And who's your sponsors now?
Uh, it's a government department, through the Department of Justice.
And, and what do they contribute to?
Uh, the province, they, I believe it's a hundred thousand dollars for the next three years.
As to all the programs?
Their province, the forty, forty-two, forty-two groups and approximately six hundred volunteers.
Oh, and is that for merchandise or for funding?
Strictly merchandise, no funding at all to any of the, the groups for mileage or compensation.
No trickle down.
Oh, okay.
No, strictly, strictly for, they have an annual A G M meeting. That's, they, I guess, the coordinators throughout the province attend.
Yeah.
And that's partially funded. And all the, I guess, the miscellaneous, they spent a lot of money just on their own, just recruiting, driving to different parts of the province and, you know, trying to recruit more of groups. I was in, I read in Druntel, that, that was the program administrator, and he asked me if I could come and drive and help in that deal with that, so, because they were having that extreme case of break-ins every other day, it was that bad. So basically, the whole town got together, so.
Okay.
But that covers his time and mileage, mine is just strictly volunteer.
So program coordinator, is that a paid position or a volunteer position?
Uh, the, the program coordinator, provincial one,
Yes.
is currently, it just became a paid position.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? No, okay, thank you very much, appreciate your.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Much appreciated.
So next is Ryan Yakal, our fire chief.
Good evening.
Good evening, so I guess we got you, brought you back, because when I read your report, you said, to my knowledge, all current members of West St. Paul are in compliance. So I guess when I looked at the act, there are some specifics that they need to be in compliance with, so. I'm not too sure, I guess, are you, do you have a format to track them, or like?
Yes, so if we're referring to the, our current municipal bylaw that governs.
Yes, right.
The department.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, so all members are issued a copy of the bylaw upon hiring and/or upon revision. They all sign off that they reviewed it and understand it. And within that bylaw, there are conditions in regards to their employment and standards that they must meet, i.e. maintaining a resident's class, maintaining a driver's license that's current and valid and meets the requirements that we require, and that they adhered a few other rules and regs. So they sign off on that, that they adhere to that and report any changes if any do occur.
And then there's another stipulation in here about the amount of time officers are supposed to spend on, onsite, that's also being.
Yeah, our officers meet the requirements, obviously meet the requirements to, for their attendance, and that's monitored and reviewed monthly, by month, by yearly and yearly with them, same as any other member.
And then also, last one, annual operating budget, have you submitted that already, or?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, okay, good, I just wanted to know if that's what it was. And are the, all the forms available for the C O to see whenever he wants?
Yeah, all our attendance forms and incident reports are submitted to the R M office. And the claims, M P I claims are submitted to, to our manager of finance. And any other documentation that's wanted to be seen, requested, is available.
Okay, and so you've read the act, so is there any changes that should be made? Or particularly, I guess there is one coming with the first responders and all that, how does that apply here, I'm not quite sure.
Um, currently, well, we're still, so we have, all but four members are medically licensed through the province. So we'll be maintaining that for twenty twenty-four. We've been, I've had the privilege to work on a working group through the Manitoba Fire Chiefs Association in regards to some changes, which requires some legislation changes. So that's, we're working with Manitoba Health and Shared Health. And I think we've, we've got a proposal from them that is a very good first step in the right direction, with the hope of, it's gonna require some legislation changes that the province has to do. And that's an involved process, it's gonna take, it needs, once a final draft is developed, it takes, it needs to be posted, it needs to be available for, I believe, a period of forty-five days, and then it goes through a full review and before it becomes, before that legislation is changed, to allow the changes that would allow sort of a lesser trained, in the way of hours, a member respond to a medical incidence. Uh, and serve the province of Manitoba or the residents of Manitoba. So that, uh, we're hoping that we're gonna have something, uh, resolved, uh, in twenty twenty-four, so this should, at some point. So, uh, it's, it's exciting, it's, it's a good step, uh, where we're hoping to see a reduction where the changes to the medical first responder program being, uh. Over three hundred hours of training required, which would be extremely difficult for a, a paid-on-call firefighter to do, you know, evenings and weekends and that sort of stuff. Uh, it's quite the commitment, um, something back to where, uh, where the first responder program was, it was about between seventy to a hundred hours of training. Which is definitely manageable and something that we can, uh, facilitate, uh, either in-house or have instructors come in to facilitate for us.
And also any questions?
No, just more of a comment, it, it's good to hear that there's some, you know, back and forth there that they're willing to move, cause it was, not only for us, but you, a lot of the smaller communities around this, around the province. Where, where, a lot of them were talking about not being able to, to exceed, to, to get to that goal at three hundred hours on some of the smaller groups, so.
That's correct, and then, I think it'd also give the opportunity for departments or communities that don't have the service to, uh, examine it and perhaps bring it in. So, uh, definitely some very good first steps and, and some information that we've had this month. And, uh, looking forward to, uh, continuing to work with this group and, and get a resolution, uh, sooner than later.
Thanks, Jake.
Okay. Councilor Clybor have anything to ask? No? Okay. Thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
So now that takes us down to, uh, four, what were we down to? Four point four one, first reading of the, uh, adding to taxes. Okay, I'll let you.
Okay, this is a first reading of, um, of the, uh, added to taxes bylaw, where we're looking at, um. Uh, transferring the outstanding balances or amounts to be collected to the, uh, to the tax roll. This is an annual occurrence, and it's, uh, got a breakdown of the, um, the amounts pertaining to, uh, bylaw infraction. And, uh, amounts relating to, uh, utility charges as well. So it's, um, recommendation to, uh, undertake first reading of bylaw.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
Just a question, I understand what the weeds are, what is the utility, like, what is that exactly?
The, um, uh, water amounts, um, sewer amounts, uh, those.
I see, okay. Okay, thank you.
There's a lot of utility. Right?
Yeah.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, so next we'll go down to four point four two, first reading of tax cancellations.
Okay, this is, um.
Can I whisper?
Nope.
No, there's.
Yes. Uh, sorry, um, yeah, the, um, yeah, th- this is the, uh, tax cancellation bylaw. Um, for, um, uh, again, this is the cancellation of, of properties from the tax rolls, which, um, for the most part can be, uh, canceled for a number of reasons. Uh, could be, um, uh, the, uh, lot splits or subdivision of properties, or business closures or otherwise, which results in the cancellation of the roll number. From the tax roll and, uh, then be replaced by a number of other, um, properties on the tax roll. So this is a bylaw that, um, again, uh, enables this, uh, on an annual basis, and it's a recommendation to proceed with first reading.
Any questions? Councilor Clybor, any questions? Okay. So now we're going down to, uh, four point, four point three. Our review of the approval of.
Sorry, can I just go back to that, I just have a quick question.
Sure, go ahead, yep.
Some of them are like twenty twenty-two and then some of them are twenty twenty-three, is this a, is this a catch-up? Or is it nor, is it normally gonna have about, uh, a twenty-four month period, or? I've just seen the years, so, some of them are like twenty twenty-two, and some of them are twenty twenty-three, so.
Yeah, may, maybe Crystal can, uh?
Yeah, so the cancellations generally, um, assessment-wise, they can only span over two years, so they, the current year and the previous year. They have, uh, a tw- twenty-four month window that they can cancel taxes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, so next is, uh, four point four three. Uh, the financial report.
Okay, uh, what is presented for, for information, and, uh, Chris is here to answer any questions that you, uh, you may have on that.
Go ahead, Councilor.
So, yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, last month I asked a question about the, uh, uh, the cost per snow clearing event. And then I, and just on top of that, I, I wanted to ask, cause I saw the notice on the RM website about, uh, additional scraping. And on some of the streets, some of the new developments, are we able to get a cost? To understand, I just wanna understand, I, that's the first time I saw that, um, and I just wanna understand the cost moving forward of those areas?
Yeah, I'll have to.
Because it sounds like it's an additional cost.
Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to our public works department if they can, um, narrow it down more. Um, during budget discussions, we will talk about the cost per snow clearing, per home, home within the RM. Um, but I can look to see if they can provide a more detailed cost of per snow clearing. For each, for each event, that's what you're looking for?
Yeah, for each event, I'd like to understand, just to get an idea that if there was four events, that this is what it would cost, if there was eight event, eight snow events, this is what it would cost, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I'm, I don't have that readily accessible to myself, but I'm sure our public works manager does, as he tracks all his, uh, costs. Um, there'd be a number of items that would be, uh, included in that costing, as well as, like, staff hours, uh, equipment hours and whatnots, which I don't have that information. But I can definitely reach out, um, to see if we can get a more, uh, concrete number.
Yeah, and I just wanna understand the cost associated with additional clearing for certain areas, because I know that was something.
Is there a certain area you're looking at, or is it just?
No, it was, uh, the, the RM had posted that they're gonna be doing some additional scraping on certain streets.
Okay, yeah.
I just wanna understand what that cost was.
Oh, for sure.
If I'm not mistaken, Councilor Paktikin, was, didn't we wanna try and get, uh, a significant snowfall, what it cost would be?
Yeah.
Mid, and then a just a normal cleaning where we're, I guess, where we're keeping things at bay, or?
Yeah, well, I, that's a, that's a good comment. I think I, what I'm trying to get at is just to get a more, uh, I wanna get finer detail on the costs of the slow clearing, just to understand it.
Okay, for sure.
Anyone else? So are you gonna be putting up the financial statements? I have some questions on the financial statement. Is that, can I go up on the screen, or do we just?
I didn't have that prepared to go on the screen.
Oh, you didn't? Okay. So, I guess I'll just ask them, so underneath surplus, you have, um. Uh, page, first page, page one. So underneath, underneath surplus, you have, um, beginning of the year, eleven, eleven million, five hundred thousand, and then you got a. I guess that's, uh, public service accounting adjustments, which is three point six million, and current surplus, which is two point eight million, which brings you down to eighteen million. So, does that indicate that there are six million dollars went into cash? Six million dollars went into public, into reserves, surplus?
Uh, sorry, just give me one second, we're just gonna get the financial statements up on the screen.
Sure.
Okay, sorry, can you re-ask your question?
Surplus, yes.
Um, the cert, like the two point eight, is that what we're talking about?
Uh, two point eight and a three point six, so that indicates, to me, when I look at that, that means that it went six million dollars into. We had six million dollars of surplus, which is eventually gonna wind up going into reserves, am I correct?
So, the, the PSAB adjustments, that's required for PSAB, that's where we enter in all of our TCA adjustments to remove it from our operating.
TCA is what?
Our, uh, tangible capital assets, so all of our assets were required, uh, through PSAB, eh, uh, to make adjustments, um, which is not cash basis. Uh, we operate on a cash basis, so all our financial statements are prepared that way. The PSAB adjustments is for our cap, our assets, uh, so those, that three point six would be a part of your non-financial assets, which are just further up on the page.
Okay, so, uh.
So currently we are sitting at a two point eight, I, these are preliminary, I just wanna stress that. There's a number of adjustments that are still required, uh, we have some transfers from operating to reserves, uh, for interests. We have, uh, potentially some grant funding that, uh, that I need to review to see if it's receivable in twenty-two, or, or sorry, in twenty-three, or s- twenty-four, or split. Um, so as of today, as these preliminary, preliminary statements sit, we have two point eight. We are still processing some December expenses, so that will be adjusted down as well. Once those amounts are posted to the, uh, general ledger.
Okay. So if I go down to, where? Conditional government transfers, you have provincial, federal, provincial, and municipal.
Mm-hmm.
So there was one point eight from the provincial government, what is that from, do you know? Would you be able to ask, answer that question?
Yeah, I'll just pull it up.
Mr. Mayor, where you, what page are you on?
Two, three.
Three. General operating funds, that's page three.
Uh, okay, so the one point eight consists of, uh, the Eames Road grant of one point one million, so that's a large one. We have the strategic infrastructure grant that came, that's that, uh, amount that was approved by council to be transferred into our sewer, sewer reserve. That was five hundred and twelve, just over five hundred and twelve thousand.
Okay, that one, okay.
Uh, we have a Water Services Board grant, which offsets the water line extension on, um, Holmes Road, I believe. Uh, and then we have a couple of other little grants that we applied for throughout the year. Uh, we have an amount for Legends of, uh, let's see. Uh, fifteen thousand approximately, we have Green Team of thirteen thousand. Uh, we have a partial payment for our curtain slash storage capital project of fifteen thousand for, uh, grant. Uh, and then we have a little portion for mural, uh, so there's a number of provincial grants that we applied for after budget.
Okay.
Um, or they are approved after budget, so we can't include those in our budget numbers, cause we don't know if we're actually going to get them. Um, if we do include it as a revenue, you have to be guaranteed that you are receiving that, because that does affect the mill rate. Um, the grants are after the fact, so it's, I'd like to say bonus money, uh, we budgeted for the expenses. Uh, we're successful in receiving the grants, which then offsets those expenses, so that's generally how we fund the reserves as well. Um, based on, uh, additional grant funding that we've received.
Okay.
So, so what you just, I just have a question, it's something you just said, so if we get a gra, if we get grant money in that we weren't expecting, won't that also affect the mill rate down then?
No, so the mill rate's set once the budget's set, it doesn't change throughout the year if we receive grant funding. If we know as of, um, say, say we're approving budget today, so if we know as of today, we're gonna get, receive five hundred thousand dollars in grant funds, we can plug that into revenue. Which would then, uh, uh, either offset the project cost, which generally they're, they come out of reserves, or offset operating if it's an item that is expensed through operating.
So, then if, if we weren't sure in twenty twenty-three if we were gonna get some of those grants, and now we've received them. We necessarily don't have to just dump them into reserves, do we?
Uh, they would be offsetting, so a lot of these items are for capital projects that were approved in twenty twenty-three that have been completed.
Okay.
Uh, so all it does is it offsets our amount that we're gonna pull from the reserve. So instead of thirty thousand, if we received fifty percent grant, we're only gonna pull fifteen from the reserve.
Okay.
Or vice versa, we pull a full thirty and transfer the fifteen at the end of the year.
So now if you go further down the, just a little bit down the, miscellaneous revenues? So there's seven hundred and ninety thousand more in there than what we were budgeted, so what was, where did that money come from? Eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand was the total, final total, seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand as well.
Yeah, so, we have, um. The large portion of that is for the, um, Eames Road light expansion of, um, at McPhillips and Eames, uh, from the developer. So it was their, their share of the project cost of six hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um, we have an NPIC rebate, fleet rebate of, uh, almost sixty-seven hundred dollars. We have our Access Credit Union naming rights, which is fifteen thousand. We have our mower insurance claim, so we pulled an amount from the reserve, the balance is sitting in the expense. Uh, and then we have the forty, uh, uh, it's just under forty-four thousand as revenue in there to offset that expense. We have our canoe rebate of just over ten thousand. Um, and then we have, the other large item would be our ARM rebate for the Christmas gala that was put on, uh, four thousand. And the rest are, uh, NSF tip fees, which don't amount to a whole lot throughout the year. Um, and then we have, there's some sponsorships for ARM, which are in there as well. And that's, that's, that's about it, that's all that's recorded to, uh, that GL.
So I guess, Eames Road now is, is all done, cause you got funding from both the government and from the developer, and that?
Yeah, I, I'm not anticipating any other costs to come through for that project. Um, there might be, uh, one more, uh, expense from Stan Tech for their final engineering fees. Uh, there is a, a twelve-month, um, warranty period, so it's done, but it won't be signed off until next fall.
Okay, so but all the revenue is now coming in from?
Yes, we've received all revenues for that project.
That's it, okay. So I guess then if we, so I see that there are a couple items that we are, um. Over budgeted, I guess, to some extent, I guess. Particularly, which one was it there? Public health and welfare services?
Yes, so that is our handy van service, I had mentioned it earlier in the year, that, uh, we're expecting to potentially be over budgeted. Just due to the increase in, um, people using the service. Uh, we fund, we fund a portion, um, and then we receive a grant of thirty, I wanna say thirty-three point three percent, it's an odd number, uh, back from the province. Uh, we have not received that yet, uh, we have to submit our year-end report, which is due, uh, by the end of February. Uh, and then they'll pay us the balance of the, the grant. And they just actually issued us our first payment of our grant, I believe, just into. And they just actually issued us our first payment of our grant, I believe, just into summer. And it was about three grand.
So then I got, I have a, does anyone else have any questions or? So I just have one more, uh, one more question has to do with utilities. So I see that in utilities, there was a year-end entry of, which one was it? It's one of the utility managers, is that what? You put a year and number in their, their salary. Is, is there a reason why that is done that way or?
It's done annually, so it's a year-end entry. It's, um, depending on who we're transferring over, uh, it's either 5% or 10% of their annual salary.
So why is it done only annually, why can't it be done throughout the year?
I want to ensure that the number is accurate, so I'm not making adjustments back and forth throughout the year. Uh, so we allocate 10% of the full salaries for certain departments.
I'm, I'm not saying you put it all into one year, but as the year goes on, you assign a certain amount a month into the salary, and then the last part of the year, you top it up with whatever you are, need to top it up with.
Right, this is just how I've done it in the past, and that's how I've continued to do it, is an annual, once a year annual entry. Uh, it's with every other adjusting entry. Um, I know what you're saying, the problem with that is it makes it difficult for me to budget and ensure items are accurate in payroll on the operating side.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I like to ensure, I like to see, Kate, this is what we were, uh, each pay period, it should be the same amount. Um, and I, I want to ensure that that is correct.
Okay, I'm not quite understanding what you, you want to make sure it's accurate, like how to?
Right, so I know what people are supposed to make every two weeks, and I ensure those, those balances are correct. Um, like it's, also, like I said, I mean, the, the entry, it's, I've always done it as an annual adjustment, uh, along with other entries throughout the utility. Um, there is still a few other adjustments that need to be made for administration expenses, so postage, um, printing, uh, envelopes, miscellaneous, uh, office, um, supplies. And those are done annually because it's, it's a lot of work to calculate it on a quarterly basis.
So I guess the downfall I see with that is that you're taking a look at the financial statements, you think that, um, everything is going great, you have a surplus, and then all of a sudden there comes this expense that is added into it, and then it becomes now a, an over-budget item. Could overcome an over-budget item, so we're not, we're never really sure where we're going to end up with at the end of the year. If there are the, all these annuals done at the end of the year. If it's accrued throughout the year, or added, or spread out over the year, then you can sort of maintain what that number is.
A lot of allocations are done annually between, um, operating and external or other entities, I should say. Not external entities, but other entities within the RM.
Counselor Kleiber does have her hand raised.
Okay, I'll let her ask a question.
We can't hear you, Counselor Kleiber.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
The allocations have nothing to do with the financial statement, they're a separate allocation. It's like job costing a job. You're still going through your revenue and expenses, it's still showing up in your financial statement. Then you do a separate allocation as a job costing. What did that job cost you for the year? It's the same thing with River's Edge. You see River's Edge as a job cost or a separate job, separate allocation. So nothing's changing our revenue and expenses. All that Crystal is doing is allocating to a specific project, so you know what the project has cost you. And that's why she's doing an even amount in salaries, uh, for the year. She, she basically divides it by 12 and, and puts it in there. And if there's any other extra, then that is adjusted at the end of the year. She's not trying to hide anything, she's not trying to do anything untoward. It's just simply what we call job costing for allocation for a project. Am I correct, Crystal?
Uh, yes, that is correct. It's a, I mean, you're saying job costing, which is a different wording for it, but project costing, right. Uh, we treat the utilities as separate entities, and they are separate entities from our general operating because they fund themselves.
Yeah, so you do, you call it what you want. We call it job costing for a project, we call it a, a utility or a certain area, you've got your River's Edge on the street, right?
Right.
So then you would have a, you would have a project cost for each one, like River Crest, River's Edge, whatever, correct?
Yes, yeah, in this case, we have the three utilities.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So I guess, I'll just clarify, so it's administrative salaries. Uh, if I was understanding, uh, Councilor Kleiber, right, is that, uh, it gets added in every month, but administrative salaries was never added in every month, it was added in the last month of the year? Which is what my concern is, you got that lump sum coming out the last part of the year into our financial expenses, and it, uh, questions, where are we going to be? That's what my main concern is.
Well, it's a simple, I mean, if you want to get that technical, it's, you add in the amount that is budgeted and take that as your expense. It may be within a couple hundred dollars of, of the actual budget, depending on what occurs in salaries. If we hire additional staff, or if, uh, say, someone happens to get a pay increase partway through the year, or if we lose a staff member, right? The amount is not going to be the same every month, which it creates a lot more work on my end to make those annual or monthly allocations, or even bi-weekly allocations.
No, and that's what I was asking is why can't, say, like it's $12,000 that you put in at the end of the year, which you calculate, but so throughout the whole year, you would put in $900.
Right, but it, the thing is, it affects two sides of, of the statements. It'll affect your operating statement, and it's also going to affect your utility statement. Because those number, those amounts are coming out of your operating.
Okay, and, and what's wrong with that?
What do you mean, what's wrong with that? It, it's, makes it hard for me to ensure things are accurate on the financial end, so it's done annually.
Okay. Oh, and, so the other, uh, thing I noticed, I have to. So when do utilities, are they, because I saw your water utility bill here, I pressed it down. So your water, your water cost, that's the last page on the water utilities. So you have, uh, a budget of 270,000, actual expense is 261,000. So is there, is, is that the last payment?
There's still one more payment coming, we just received the invoice. Um, so there's that for December 20 year-end, uh, 2023, sorry, year-end. As well as, if you look on the sewer side, there is the City of Winnipeg fees as well that are payable annually. So once a year, we cut them a check for the participation fee, um, and, uh, the buy-in charges.
Okay.
So those, those items are based on invoices. Um, it's not something that we would place an accrual. We actually, we used to have accounts payable for it and record it that way. Our auditor told us we have to show it as an expense on our financials, so.
So what's the participation?
So the participation fee is collected quarterly on each utility bill. Um, it's, I believe it's 63, I want to say 6325 quarterly. Uh, it's required by the City of Winnipeg for their services for the treatment of our sewer. So whatever they use the participation fee, I don't know, but it's part of our agreement.
Okay.
Um, so there's a few items that we pay the City of Winnipeg for the sewer services, which is a cubic meter fee. Uh, that's paid quarterly once they issue us an invoice, so we still have quarter four invoice to be paid. We haven't received it yet. Uh, we have the participation fee, which is paid annually once we submit our reports. So we have to do a report of all the properties that are connected to sewer and calculate the participation fee for each property, and we remit that to them along with our report, as well as, uh, the buy-in fees and upfront fees. Those are for any new properties that connect. Um, the upfront is strictly brand-new homes. The buy-in is for all new properties connecting to the sewer within the year, and it's a one-time fee, those two.
Okay. Any other questions? The Councilor Kleiber have any other questions? Right, man, okay.
So, sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, so our final December statements will be coming in at the next COW. Uh, we have to submit it to the province by March 15th, so those will be for review, uh, and that's what council will accept for the year.
So they'll be coming at, uh?
Then, uh, in March, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and then we'll have January statements as well. Um, also, you had requested an additional line item to be added to the financial statement to summarize, uh, operating, uh, revenue and expenses.
Yes.
In order for me to do that, I have to recreate the entire statement, which is quite time-consuming, so that's why I didn't add it on. Um, I don't know if that's something you want to still be added on there, or if we're okay the way they are.
You know, if it's too much to add, if it's a lot of work to add on then.
Yeah, I have to recreate the entire statement, so it's.
I, I thought all you might have to do is just insert another line.
I, I tried that, yes, and it's like, no, doesn't like it, so.
Oh, that's all right, no, I appreciate you for trying.
Okay.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, so that makes. So thank you very much for your time and explanation, your explanation and your patience, so I appreciate that.
Yep, anytime.
So now we are at, oh, spring road policy. Which is 4.4.4.
Yes, this is, uh, this is, this is an update to, um, 2023 spring road restrictions policy. So we've updated the, uh, roadways where, uh, weight restrictions will apply. Typically, weight restrictions are applied, um, uh, coincidentally with, uh, with, uh, the provincial weight restrictions, and they span between the beginning of March and the end of May. There were, uh, no changes to the, um, Class B road listing, but there was an addition of 17 roads to the, uh, Class B 1 roads, where there's a 90% restriction on normal axle, axle roads. So this is just an update of the, uh, roads where, um, road restrictions will apply for 2024.
Counselor have any questions?
Just a.
Go ahead, Counselor.
For a comment, um, in, in the areas that we have lots of developments still going on, is it possible to start, you know, getting signs up, starting to post a date on this? And, you know, I, I watched DOT guys coming off the perimeter going right up Park View. I'm just saying, using that one as an example. They're already stopping people because they're, they're driving into those areas. You know, full loads, big loaders on the back, just to start putting that, this date, this is starting, and they, they start to find themselves in alternate routes.
Yeah, we won't, we won't know the actual date where road restrictions will be applied. Um, given the spring with, that we've been having, I think it's fair to anticipate it'll be March 1st, but, um, that's the earliest that they, um, the province can, can implement.
So, does anybody, uh, monitor this? You know, like you see the highways, they have their trucks there, they have, uh, people pulled over to the side and?
We, if, um, if, if there's infractions in place, um, uh, we will respond and deal with them, yes.
Okay.
I know in previous years, it's been tough, right, when there's road restrictions on and there's trucks been coming, dropping mud off in developments. I know DOT says it's not their jurisdiction, and we don't really have a jurisdiction or leg to stand on to do anything either besides stop a guy and, uh, you know, tell, tell him politely not to come. So I, I, I think that's the case. I don't know if it's a case that we have to write a bylaw or do something, or I'm not, I'm not sure what we have to do, but we should, we should have something written up so that we at least have something or some teeth with companies or the, choosing to destroy our roads.
Yeah, certainly, certainly, we, uh, we're going to pull the trucks over and, and advise them that, that there is weight restrictions in place and that they need to adhere to them.
But we can't do anything when we do pull them over and tell them that, right? I don't think, you know, they can just say, "Okay, and carry on in merry way," and we don't have, like, it's not like our vehicles even have, you know, lights on to, to pull anybody over. We basically got to flag a guy down as he's trying to drive past you.
Uh, there's limitations to what we can do here.
We're going to have the equipment to check them at the same time, so.
No, I know, but, uh, any tandem truck is overweight with their front tire on a Class B road. You don't need a scale to handle that.
Any other questions? Seeing none, okay, let's carry on to the next one, which is, uh, 4.5.1 request for service.
So we've got a monthly request for service, total number of requests, uh, opened of seven, 14 closed, and, uh, we've got the monthly report summary there, um, for review now. We've made some progress in terms of, um, um, uh, I would say cleaning up some of the data that, that we get out of this report to provide it as meaningful reports as possible, and, and we made good progress in that regard, and we'll continue to do so. We're still seeing some issues where we, we talk about, um, in reality, the, the, where we have a, a, um, number of days, uh, on average, to close a system in, in, um, December, or, or in, uh, January was four days, but, uh, the average number of system wide is 123. That again is being skewed by some of the outstanding requests that we're trying to clean up and have been dragged around for, for some time and, and really are no longer, no longer, um, valid. For example, if there is, uh, some noise of complaints that had been closed, or grass complaints that had been closed, or, or some complaints that need to be addressed in the spring and otherwise. We, we're looking to recategorize these to, to provide, um, uh, cleaner reports on this. But we made good progress, and, um, and we continue to do so.
Anyone have a question? Counselor Kleiber, Kleiber have any questions? No, okay. So next is?
Um, I have a question.
Oh, go ahead. Counselor Kleiber.
So just generally speaking, with regards to property cleanup matters, um, what's the timeframe on something like that? Like, you know, you have a property that has to be cleaned up. Um, you know, there's obviously, um, a process, and there's opportunities provided to the homeowners to clean that up. But what can people expect in terms of a turnaround, uh, for that type of, uh, that type of concern?
I think it would depend on, on the, um, the, the specific instance. Uh, the most aggressive type of enforcement or cleanup that we can undertake is probably in the neighborhood of, uh, four to five weeks, where, uh, an initial, uh, visit is made, um, a letter is provided, requesting cleanup, followed by an order two weeks later, followed by, um, by, uh, action at that point. So realistically, probably four to five weeks, yeah, um, in the, um, most aggressive, uh, type of, uh, type of enforcement. If we do see progress, and we do see active progress, um, we will, um, work with the resident to allow them to, uh, to, uh, complete the task on their own. But depending on the progress of the activity, in the, in the sort of the most extreme circumstances, um, typically looking at four to five weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I think that finishes it all, now we're down to questions here, that. Does anyone have any questions? None? Saying none, okay. Great, oh, you do, okay.
Morna Alberg, 12. Um, the, um, on the added to taxes, um, I have the same comment, I guess, about the utility, and perhaps it's a process in that. And perhaps it's a process, and that, how are there so many properties that are behind on the utility?
Uh, I don't know if we can answer that. Do we need some investigation or? Or can you?
Yeah, it's outstanding, uh, utility bills as, uh, anything that's past due as of December thirty first. So if people have not paid their utility bills, uh, which are due March, um, June and September, due the month following, um, those are all considered past due. Those are transferred to the tax roll. It's done annually. Um, as to the municipal, we're able to transfer those outstanding amounts. So it's the one way that we are able to enforce collection, um, on those properties. Now, if they are outstanding, they are paying penalties. If it's not, penalty free. So it's one point two five percent on the outstanding balance at the end of each month.
The vast majority were were small numbers, but, um, how does one get to a few thousand beyond?
They just don't pay their bills.
Just period.
Yeah, yeah, we send them their quarterly bills, and they just, they don't pay them, so.
But that that would not, that couldn't accrue beyond, what, two tax periods?
Uh, one, one year. So two zero twenty three, whatever is outstanding as of December thirty, or past due as of December thirty first for two zero twenty three, is transferred to the tax roll. Two zero twenty two is the same. Generally, people will pay them shortly after year end close. Um, if they remain on the tax roll outstanding past two years, then it goes into the tax sale process.
Okay.
Which we're going to be starting soon.
All right. And another quick one, I notice on the, uh, uh, register coming up on Thursday, there's a third payment for a government check, and it's to, um, PSFB. And, uh, it's now totaling for three checks over the last couple of months, uh, well over eight hundred thousand dollars. And I have asked and been told that the RM doesn't know what that stands for, and I have difficulty with that.
Oh, to to to
Go ahead.
To clarify that, that was a, that is a payment to the school board. I don't know what precisely PSFB stands for, but it it is a payment to the school board. I've, for for
It it's the provincial school?
Uh, school board, school division.
Right, it, so we have three, um, areas that we have to pay school taxes to. We have the provincial school or fund, I I want to say that's what it's called. Um, we have Seven Oaks School Division and Interlake.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we collect it via the tax bills, and we have to remit it by, um, March thirty first for the prior year. So therefore, we we usually pay in three installments
Mm-hmm.
um, as taxes are collected. So it's based on a percentage, and the last payment is the full amount distributed to each of the three collectors.
Okay.
Yeah, whether whether that precisely means public schools funding division or public school something. Uh, it, I I just wasn't, I just didn't know what the precise acronym are that are associated with the payment to the school division was.
Mm-hmm. I guess I hadn't noticed them in the past, certainly knew that we had the two school divisions. So does that third payment, which I guess goes more generally to the province, does that also come out of the school portion of our individual tax base?
Uh, not, not for the residents. It's charged on other properties. So they would pay their school division that they are located in plus an other, plus the provincial share. So it's anyone that is classified as an other property that would pay that.
Sorry, I don't follow that, like a business?
So it could be a business, it could, anything that's commercial related, uh, residential is not. They only have their school division that their, their home is located within.
Yeah.
And the municipal taxes, whereas properties that are deemed other, which is generally commercial property, they have the school division that they're located in, as well as the provincial fund that they have to pay as well on there.
Okay.
All right, yep, I know, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay, I'll, um, call, I'll adjourn the meeting then. I can, uh, what time is it, seven fifteen? Okay, so I'll, the committee of the whole meeting of council has been, is adjourned at seven fifteen P M.